All right, if we could have all town meeting members, please take their seats. Just a reminder, the seats at the front of the hall with the tables are reserved for town meeting members, and seats in the rear of the auditorium are open to any guests or visitors. At this time, if you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you wouldn't remain standing for just a moment, we can have a moment of silence for all of our troops here and across the world protecting our freedoms. Also, I was informed recently, one of our former town meeting members who was also active, I believe, on the planning board and other things in town, Ed Bozell, passed away recently in a motorcycle accident, so if you could please keep him and his family in the prayers. Thank you. All right, our tellers for tonight are Ms. Herman. I know, messed this up. Ms. Herman Durant, I'm sorry, from Precinct One, and Mr. Rosetti from Precinct Two. If the tellers would please come forward to be sworn to their duties.
Do you swear to faithfully and impartially perform your duties as a teller for our Saugus Town Meeting for the Town of Saugus to the best of your abilities?
I do. Congratulations.
At this time, if town meeting members would please raise their right hand, and I would ask the tellers to take the count. Okay, that's 42 plus the moderator, so we do have a quorum. Please put all cell phones or other electronic devices in silent mode. Members are reminded, the use of electronic devices during meetings is restricted to viewing documents or websites pertinent to the business or articles before us, and texting, gaming, or other uses are prohibited. And the town clerk will now call the roll.
Portolo.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Berube.
Here.
Brown.
Yeah.
Camuso.
Yeah.
Chaparres.
Yeah.
Connors.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
Codham.
Here.
Cross.
Yeah.
Curry.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Delios.
Here.
Darty.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Federico.
Here.
Ferrari.
Yeah.
Goodwin.
Here.
Brabowski is not here. Herman Durant.
Here.
Hickman.
Here.
Kelly.
Yeah.
Long.
Yeah.
LaPreste.
Yeah.
Minugian.
Yeah.
McCarthy.
Yeah.
McCullough. McCullough. Meredith.
Yeah.
Marashi.
Yeah.
O'Brien.
Yeah.
Haleshi.
Yeah.
Columba.
Here.
Panetta.
Yeah.
Panico.
Yes.
Hayolini.
Here.
Holante.
President.
Rickenich is not here. Ring.
Here.
Rosetti.
President.
Sacco is not here. Shenna.
Yeah.
Scuzzarella.
Here.
Chalowski is not here. Spencer.
Here.
Straznik is not here. Taligan will be late. She called. Thompson.
Yeah.
Wallace.
Yeah.
Wickham.
Yeah.
Worthley.
Yeah.
Forty-three and seven. Those that I mentioned that are not here all contacted us, letting us know that they will not be here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Also, Mr. Sacco, there was some confusion last week, I guess. He did indicate prior to the meeting that he wasn't going to be in attendance, and as you can see, he's not here again this evening, but he did notify us. Okay, our first order of business is accepting the minutes of the previous session. While I do have a copy of the minutes from the last meeting available, if anyone needs to review them, since a copy is posted on the town website shortly after each meeting for all to review, and knowing that you're all diligent about reviewing them online, if there's no objection, the minutes of the last session will be accepted by unanimous consent. Hearing none, the minutes are accepted as posted. When recognized to speak, all speakers are asked to step up to the podium. Town meeting members, please state your name and the precinct that you represent. Other town officers or employees, just your name and position in the town, and any residents, just your name and address. This way, everyone at home can see and identify with who they're hearing. We will be observing the time limits for speakers per Section 208 of the town bylaws. All right, we have 28 articles this year on the annual town meeting, along with one remaining special within the annual containing one article. The special article and Article 21 from the annual warrant require a recommendation from the planning board, and it's my understanding that they'll be meeting on those on May 15th and 29th, so we'll be addressing those at a later date. We're waiting for the Board of Selectmen on the sewer rate so that we can finalize the budget, but I'm told that should be done for next week for Articles 2, 6, 7, and 11. We do have recommendations from the Finance Committee on 16 articles from the annual warrant and six articles that don't require a recommendation, so we have plenty to keep us busy tonight. The next order of business tonight is Article 1, to hear and act on reports of committees, starting with the Finance Committee. Ken?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, as the town moderator has stated, we've made recommendations on all financial articles as required by the town charter to this date. I'd just like to remind the town meeting once again that Article 17, which asked for $250,000 to be appropriated out of their targeted stabilization fund for enhancement, was funded $100,000 for fiscal 2026, with $150,000 being rolled over from the appropriation that was made in 2025 for the enrichment program, making it whole in a full amount of $250,000. So even though that article is only recommending $100,000 by the Finance Committee, it is being fully funded with the money that's being rolled over from 2025. With that being said, the Finance Committee obviously has worked really hard on these recommendations, and we once again hope that you'll support our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Do we have any other committees that would like to report out at this time? Mr. Minugia.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, there's two committees that you created last year, one being the Apartment Inspection Committee, the second one being the Ashland Field Closure Committee. The Apartment Inspection Committee will be the report that I'll give first. We've had several meetings. It was our intention to speak with communities that have an apartment inspection process, and the communities that we chose are Revere, Malden, Everett, and Lynn. We did receive reports from the members that created information on Malden and Revere, and we discussed those. We're still waiting for reports from Lynn on the Lynn situation and Everett. We should have that soon. The bottom line is, there is a state code, a minimum standards for fitness for human habitation. It's a state sanitary code, 105 CMR 410, and it looks like the direction that we'd be going would not to create a specific bylaw of what should be done, but perhaps enabling legislation, asking or recommending that the town institute a formal process. Right now, there is a process for public housing, Section 8, and so forth, that must be done. What a... The decision that we need to make as a community is, should we do that across the board? And if so, what elements would that include, if any, or would we leave it up to the Inspection Service Department or the Board of Health to implement that? And some of the things that they look at, there's categories, buildings, building and plumbing, electrical and fire, health and safety, enforcement procedures, everything from means of egress, approved toilets, plumbing connections, hot water, measuring the temperature of the hot water, electrical and fire, and this would overlap with what the fire department does with smoke detectors and carbon monoxide alarms, electrical service, emergency lighting, and if you go into health and safety, things like lead-based, lead paint hazards, protective railings and walls, elimination of pests, and other things. So there's a whole list of things that are minimum standards for fitness. So again, the direction would be, should we specify what should be inspected, or should we adopt a recommendation that 105 CMR 410 be implemented by Inspection Services? I want to be clear that this would not be a moneymaker for the town. Perhaps it could cost money for the town to have the staff necessary to do this, but it comes down to, with the apartments that are being built and with the accessory bylaw that's coming on, is this something that Saugus should do? We're not there yet, and we welcome your input as to how you feel about it thus far. So we'll continue our work on that. The second report has to do with the Ashland Field Closure Committee. We've had a number of meetings on this, and we took the position, we put aside any personal feelings about the situation down in 107, and we worked with the goal the town meeting established, to have a collaborative process where we would invite representatives of WIN Ways to work with us to come up with use past closure. As you may know, the landfill is scheduled to close in the fall of 2027, and there is nothing we've investigated as to whether or not there's any request to either modify legislation or regulations to allow it to continue. There is not. There is nothing pending. There's nothing that's being asked. And therefore, we proceeded to have to do our work and to investigate what the possibilities could be. The members of the committee included myself, a town meeting member, Precinct 10, Carla Scuzzarella, Selectman Mike Serino, Deborah Panetta, and Jeanne Meredith, also representing the manager's office, she's also a town meeting member. We had four public hearings, initiated a report to the Saugus Board of Health on January 25. Right now, 50% of ash is being transported out of Saugus to Shrewsbury, which is approximately 50 miles away, and it's had zero impact on the town of Saugus in terms of its streets and so forth. Shrewsbury also receives ash from Hudson Falls, New York, 186 miles away, and we looked at this from the perspective, not so much of the environment benefit, but the benefit to the Saugus tax base and budgeting, and the amount of revenue that could come our way if this was utilized for uses that had previously been contemplated in the 1984 original tax agreement, the 1994 clarifying tax agreement, subdivision plans that were submitted to the planning board by then Wheeler Brede in 2003 and 2017, town meeting's action of wanting to see an overlay for solar farm there, and development of the 235-acre landfill. The financial chart is compelling, that the amount of revenue that the town could receive if there is development down there, whether it be of solar farms or other uses, that would be far more beneficial to the town of Saugus than a paltry sum of $1 million a year that's currently been proposed. The subdivision plans were clear that they submitted. It was their intention, apparently, to subdivide into 10 commercial lots. Haze Engineering represented WIN, a solar farm. The town, as you know, has a solar farm up at the four acres of the town's DPW landfill, and we received $20,000 a year annually from that. If a solar farm is down at WIN, it would be 59 times greater in size, and you can just imagine 59 times 20,000 with the amount of revenue that could yield for the town. The tax revenue, Mr. Serino, as a former chairman of the Board of Assessors, has done some research on this and put together some compelling numbers that he'd like to share with you at this time, and it's our intention to continue this work and to continue to be willing to have a representative from WIN join us. We did everything from send a registered mail to the chief executive officer, inviting him down, and they just don't seem like they want to collaborate on this process. And I will remind you that Aggregant Industries did collaborate with the town, and this is a process going forward that will yield economic benefits for the town. So this is the right thing to do, to continue this conversation, and hopefully, as the closure date comes nearer, they will be willing to sit with us, and we will ask that the committee be allowed to continue. So, Mr. Moderator, if I may, can Mr. Serino approach and present his findings?
Mr. Serino, approach if you would, and if I could have the gentleman from Saugus Cable come out. I know if you'll bear with us, we have a quick transition we have to do here so we can do this presentation. good out here, so let's hear it for him. This is Mr. Serino. The floor is yours.
Next page, previous page. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, as town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, I'll try to be pretty brief. Peter went over this, the committee, who the committee members are, Peter's chairman, Carla, Deborah Panetta, Jeanne Meredith, myself. We're going to discuss all these issues, the property tax agreement, the landfill subdivision plans, the solar farm, the development, which is important with the potential revenue it can bring in, and closing remarks. In 1984 and 1985, we had tax agreements with Resco, Wheeler Brede, and they all talked about developing that landfill. Subdivision plans were filed in 2003 for 12 lots out of the 235 acres, then in 2017 for 12 lots for the 235 acres. So there continues to be discussion about the subdivision plans. We have a solar farm, and so I guess we're receiving $20,000 annually in lieu of property taxes. The 235-acre solar farm up in WIN, or the WIN landfill, could potentially bring us in $1.2 million a year. Development plans, I looked at, I took the 235 acres, we divided it into 10 lots, and we got 23 acres a lot. I looked at the commercial property on Route 107 and looked at the land values here and get an average land value of $360,000 per acre, and that's how I figured the land values for those 23 acre, 10 lots. Just to note the potential acreage per acre, land value on Route 1 is $630,000. So I looked at potential, and these are based on 2024 tax values, which are on the town assessors' website. I looked at, you know, Hill Hillco, Home Depot, Lowe's, Target, Square One Mall, what their values are, what they could bring in potential tax revenue. Marshalls, Eastern Bank, Stone Hill, that's a Palumbo property, Walmart and Kohl's, and all of them, 10 lots could potentially bring us in $5.6 million in tax revenue for the town of Saugus every year. If you look at the financial chart, what WIN offered for 20 years was a one-time payment of $20 million. You look at 20 years for the town, if it was developed, it would bring us in $100 million. After the 20 years, there's no more revenue coming in if we use a landfill. It's dead. It's a 100-foot-high landfill, can't be developed. So I guess we'd get $5 million a year forever. My closing remarks, I think the potential Saugus property tax revenue of $5 million a year, it's a forever yearly tax revenue stream, a forever economic and development opportunities on that lot, and no further harm to the environment. What WIN's proposal is, continued dumping of toxic ash into the landfill, which is harmful to the environment, results in 100-foot-high landfill, toxic ash landfill, no development opportunities, and a one-time payment of that $20 million. That's it, and no forever economic benefit to the town or WIN. So that's our report. We're stressing that. The best option for that landfill is not to dump more ash here, it's to develop it. It'll provide a better economic value to both WIN and the town of Saugus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serino. Okay. At this time, we're going to get on with our regular order of business. We have a motion to take Article 28 out of order and bring that up first. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Article 28, "To see if the town of Saugus will move to enact the Home Rule petition regarding the disability pension of Christopher Taylor administered by the Saugus Retirement Board, be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives in general court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, the Saugus Retirement Board shall increase the accidental disability retirement allowance payable to Christopher Taylor, a retired officer of the Police Department of the town of Saugus who, as a result of injury sustained while in the performance of his duties on August 6, 2020, is totally impermanently incapacitated from performing the essential duties of a police officer. The annual amount of the pension payable to Christopher Taylor shall be equal to the regular rate of compensation which would have been paid had he continued in service as a police officer of the town of Saugus at a grade level held by him at the time of his retirement until his death or reaching mandatory retirement age, whichever comes first. All amounts paid under this act shall be non-taxable to the extent allowable under state and federal law. The additional benefits granted herein shall be funded and administered by the Saugus Retirement Board, consistent with and subject to Chapter 32 of the General Laws, except that Sections 8 and 91A of Chapter 32 of the General Laws shall not apply; however, all amounts paid herein shall be non-taxable. Upon attaining the mandatory retirement age for a police officer of the town of Saugus, Christopher Taylor shall receive a pension pursuant to Section 7 of said Chapter 32, a yearly amount of pension equal to 80% of the annual rate of the compensation he was receiving on the day before he reaches the mandatory retirement age for a police officer in the town of Saugus. Notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, the benefits granted herein shall be funded and administered by the Saugus Retirement Board, consistent with and subject to Chapter 32 of the General Laws. Section 2, notwithstanding any general or special election, special law, I'm sorry, to the contrary, Christopher Taylor shall be entitled to receive indemnification for all hospital, medical, and related expenses that have been or may be incurred after the date of his retirement as a result of the injuries sustained by him while in the performance of his duties on August 7, 2013, in accordance with Sections 100 and 1,008 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws. Section 3, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, the Saugus Retirement Board shall forthwith pay to said Christopher Taylor the amount credited to him as accumulated total deductions in the Annuity Savings Fund of the Saugus Retirement Board as of the effective date of this act. Section 4, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, if Christopher Taylor was married upon retirement upon his death, if he shall, if he is still married to the spouse he was married to upon retirement, then his, should his spouse to whom he was married on the date upon retirement survive him, the Retirement Board of the town of Saugus shall pay to his spouse annuity in the amount of 75% of the amount of the pension, which otherwise would have been payable to Christopher Taylor until the spouse's death. The pension benefits provided for in this section and Section 1 shall be subject to Section 103 of Chapter 32 of the General Laws. Section 5, in the event that both Christopher Taylor and his spouse to whom he was married on the date of retirement die before their children reach the age of 18, the payment that would otherwise have been made to Christopher Taylor's spouse shall be paid per stipes to each surviving child under the age of 18, provided, however, the payment shall continue for the benefit of a surviving child 18 years or older who, or who honor before the date of death of Christopher Taylor or his spouse to whom he was married on the date of retirement, whichever is later, had been medically determined to be permanently physically or mentally incapacitated from earning, or for the benefit of a child under the age of 22 who is enrolled as a full-time student as determined by the criteria of the educational institution. This is submitted by Michael Riccadelli, Saugus Chief of Police. This motion is made as a courtesy to the maker by Ms. Meredith. Do I have a, and let me, the recommendation of the Finance Committee, voted to recommend the Saugus Town Meeting vote to enact the Home Rule petition regarding the disability pension of Christopher Taylor administered by the Saugus Retirement Board. Do I have a second on Article 28?
Aye.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, or called a question? All in favor?
We got a roll call.
Sure. Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Ask for a roll call vote. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to enact the Home Rule petition regarding the disability pension of Christopher Taylor, as just read out as Article 28? Please signify by saying aye when your name is called. All opposed, say nay.
We need a moment for him to get us hooked back up.
Bear with us for one moment so we can just switch the screen back over. each surviving child under the age of 18, provided, however, that payment shall continue for the benefit of a surviving child 18 years or older who or who honor before the date of death of Christopher Taylor or his spouse to whom he was married on the date of retirement, whichever is later, had been medically determined to be permanently physically or mentally incapacitated from earning, or for the benefit of a child under the age of 22 is enrolled, who is enrolled as a full-time student as determined by the criteria of the educational institution." This is submitted by Michael Riccadelli, Saugus Chief of Police. This motion is made as a courtesy to the maker by Ms. Meredith. Do I have a, and let me, the recommendation of the Finance Committee voted to recommend the Saugus Town Meeting vote to enact the home rule petition regarding the disability pension of Christopher Taylor administered by the Saugus Retirement Board. Do I have a second on Article 28? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? Sure. Madam Secretary? Ask for a roll call vote. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to enact the home rule petition regarding the disability pension of Christopher Taylor as just read out as Article 28? Please signify by saying aye when your name is called. All opposed, say nay.
We need a moment for him to get us hooked back up.
Bear with us for one moment so we can just switch the screen back over. You should have received a handout on this also with some additional documentation.
Ready?
Ready.
Bartolo. Bell. Berubi. Brown. Camuso. Chapores. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty. Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Robowski is not here. Herman Durant. Hickman. Kelly. Long. LaPresti. Minugian. McCarthy. McCullough is not here. Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Palumba. Panetta. Panico. Hayolini. Carlente. Riknik is not here. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco is not here. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Schalkowski is not here. Spencer. Strazek is not here. Taligan. Thompson. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthley. Forty-three yeas, zero nays, six ahs.
The motion has passed unanimously. All right, not having a Finance Committee recommendation on Article 2, at this time, I would entertain a motion to take Articles 3, 4, and 5 out of order. Anybody? All right, so may. Do I have a second to take Articles 3, 4, and 5 out of order? Any, anybody, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 3 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to make supplementary appropriations to be used in conjunction with money appropriated under Article 2 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting during the current fiscal year and determine whether the money shall be provided by transfer from available funds or to see what other action the town wishes to take in the matter." Finance Committee recommended the town make supplementary appropriations in the amount of $1,538,200 to be used in conjunction with the money appropriated under Article 2 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting during the current fiscal year. The source of funding is $438,200 from the interdepartmental transfers and $1,100,000 from the July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash. Do I have a second on Article 3? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to make supplementary appropriations in the amount of $1,538,200 to be used in conjunction with the money appropriated under Article 2 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting during the current fiscal year, with the source of funding being $438,200 from interdepartmental transfers and $1,100,000 from the July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article 3 has passed. "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 4 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to make supplementary appropriations to be used in conjunction with money appropriated under Article 6 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Water Enterprise during the current fiscal year and determine whether the money shall be provided by transfer from available funds or to see what other action the town wishes to make in the matter." The Finance Committee has recommended indefinite postponement on Article 4. Do I have a second? All right, moved and seconded for indefinite postponement. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of indefinite postponement for Article 4, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, Article 4 is IPed. Article 5, "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 5 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to make supplementary appropriations to be used in conjunction with money appropriated under Article 7 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Sewer Enterprise during the current fiscal year and determine whether the money shall be provided by transfer from available funds or to see what other action the town wishes to take in the matter." Again, the Finance Committee voted indefinite postponement on Article 5. Do I have a second? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? On the Finance Committee's recommendation, hearing none. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to indefinitely postpone Article 5, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article 5 is IPed. As a courtesy, hearing, not having recommendations on Article 7, at this time, I would entertain a motion to take Articles 8, 9, and 10 out of order. All right, motion made. Any second? All right, all in favor of taking Articles 8, 9, and 10 at this time? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 8 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the purpose of funding unpaid bills for a prior fiscal year. Finance Committee recommended the town appropriate $107,095.10 for the purpose of funding unpaid bills of a prior fiscal year. The source of funding is fiscal year 2024 Municipal Department General Fund carryover in the amount of $46,442.30 and fiscal year 2025 School Department General Fund operating budget in the amount of $60,652.80." Do I have a second on Article 8? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Minugian.
Relative to the school department request for $69,652.30, see a lot there for landscaping and appears to be legal counsel, $41,000, close to $50,000 of that is for legal counsel. Given that there was no collective bargaining during this fiscal year, at least I didn't think so, there was, is this related to the arbitration award for the pharmacist superintendent? These law, these law firms? The $50,000 for, $40,000 for Hirsch, Roberts, and Weinstein, and Smith, Doug, and Cornell and Gallop for $89.97. That's my first, it is. So that's $50,000 for arbitration defense. And on the Arctic Oil Ferrari landscaping, why wasn't that budgeted? Why wasn't the landscaping budgeted? And if you knew you had an issue with landscaping, how much money do we have, Mr. Chairman, in the Finance Committee reserves? Is it still $100,000? Will you ask if any of this, no. I don't feel comfortable that, I don't want this to be a practice where the school department has recurring costs that they know about. Mr. Manager, did you know about these costs during the year? Does anyone in the school department want to comment on this?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, just for clarification, so these are invoices that are submitted after the fiscal year closes, and municipal finance law requires a nine-tenths vote from Town Meeting to be able to pay up prior year's bill. I'm not, I'm not sure that these were invoices that we got after, but the, as you can see, they're broken out to where they're, what department they're associated with. The ones on the top describes the vendors, and the bottom ones describe the vendors as well. But I don't know if they got the invoices or whatever, but when we got them or had them, they weren't paid, so then we have to have a Town Meeting vote on those to be able to pay those, if that helps.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other discussion on Article 8? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town appropriate $107,095.10 for the purpose of funding unpaid bills for a prior fiscal year. The source of funding is fiscal year 2024 Municipal Department General Fund carryover in the amount of $46,442.30 and fiscal year 2025 School Department General Fund operating budget in the amount of $60,652.80. Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article 8 has passed. "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 9 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available funds in the Transportation Infrastructure Fund to be expended in accordance with Act ST 2016, Chapter 187, Section 8 CI and Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53. The Finance Committee recommended the town appropriate the sum of $32,570 to be expended in accordance with Chapter 187 of the Acts of 2016, Section 8 CI and Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53. Source of funding is the Transportation Infrastructure Fund." Do I have a second on Article 9? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen. If it's over, this is the Lyft share, Uber, Lyft rides, and there's a certain amount of money that each community gets. If it's over $25,000, then we need an appropriation from Town Meeting. And as we've done in the past years, generally, we've used this money to do, pay for a portion of the line painting. It's $32,570 that would be appropriated, and the DPW would use that for something to do with transportation. And in the past years, we've used it for paying part of the line painting costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on Article 9? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate the sum of $32,570 to be expended in accordance with Chapter 187 of the Acts of 2016, Section 8 CI and Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53. The source of funding is the Transportation Infrastructure Fund. Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article 9 has passed. "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 10 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to authorize an amount to be expended from each of the revolving funds listed below and authorized under the Town of Saugus bylaws as amended April 9, 2018 as Section 405, Departmental Revolving Funds for the ensuing fiscal year 2026. And they are the Saugus Senior Center Program and Activities, Saugus Senior Center Lunch Program, Water System Cross-Connection Program, Town of Saugus Compost Program, and Youth and Recreation Programs and Activities. The Finance Committee voted to recommend the town authorize an amount to be expended from each of the revolving funds listed below and authorized under the Town of Saugus bylaws as amended April 9, 2018 as Section 405, Departmental Revolving Funds for the ensuing fiscal year 2026. Youth and Recreation Programs and Activities, $195,000. Town of Saugus Compost Program, $50,000, Recycling Facility. Water System Cross-Connection Program, Backflow, $40,000. Saugus Senior Center Lunch Program, $25,000. Saugus Senior Center Programs and Activities, $50,000." Do I have a second on Article 10? Moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article 10? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to authorize the following amounts to be expended from each of the revolving funds authorized under the Town of Saugus bylaws as amended April 9, 2018 as Section 405, Departmental Revolving Funds for the ensuing fiscal year 2026. Youth and Recreation Programs and Activities, $195,000. Town of Saugus Compost Program, Recycling Facility, $50,000. Water System Cross-Connection Program, Backflow, $40,000. Saugus Senior Center Lunch Program, $25,000. Saugus Senior Center Programs and Activities, $50,000. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, Article 10 has passed. We do not have a recommendation from the Finance Committee on Article 11, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to take Articles 12 through 20 out of order. We have the motion. Do I have a second? All in favor of taking Articles 12 through 20 at this time, signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 12 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for construction and reconstruction of various streets and sidewalks, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommended that the town appropriate $700,000 for reconstruction and construction of various streets and sidewalks, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. The source of funding is July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash." Do I have a second on Article 12? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate $700,000 for construction and reconstruction of various streets and sidewalks, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, with the source of funding being July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article 12 has passed. "As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article 13 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of repairing or replacing town guardrails, including payment of costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto. And the Finance Committee voted to recommend the town appropriate $150,000 for the purpose of repairing or replacing town guardrails. The source of funding is July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash." Do I have a second on Article 13? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Costello.
I've asked this question before, and I'm going to ask it again, just to get a clarification once more on this particular budgetary year. These guardrails, they get damaged usually by an automobile accident, and hopefully, the person that drives into those things is covered with insurance. So I'm curious to know again if there is any recourse for the town to recoup refunds for the damage to the guardrails by way of the insurance company from the motorists who affected the damage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Mr. Moderator, Town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, great question, and we talk about this at some of the smaller meetings that I have, is that some guardrails are damaged, but there's also guardrails that are just 20 or 30, 40 years old that need to be replaced. But anything that's hit by a motor vehicle accident, we have a system in place with the, Police Chief was here earlier, but when they fill out an accident report, that's been reported at the scene, they have a box that they check on the, in the, on the accident report system, which then will, then generates a report that gets sent to our office that handles insurance claims as well as the DPW. So we do what we can to recoup any damage to any town property. That's a guardrail, it could be a fire hydrant, any property damage, signage, whatever it is, and sidewalks, and we go after the insurance company, put a claim in. Unfortunately, or fortunately, sometimes these damages that occurs are hit and runs, and so we don't have, you know, we do a preliminary investigation, but we're not able to identify who damaged the town property. So then, each year, as you know, you've, you've allocated and appropriated money each year. We have a list that the DPW goes through, and each year, they'll put it out to bid and have a bunch of them done each year, so that we do with the certified free cash, we're doing a pay-as-you-go capital to be able to fix those things. But we try to do what we can. My office actually is intimately involved in it as well, when we see things, to make sure that we track it down and see if we can recover monies first. But if not, then this money goes to repairing guardrails, sometimes putting new guardrails in, et cetera. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other discussion on Article 13? Okay, hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate $150,000 for the the purpose of repairing or replacing town guardrails? Source of funding is July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Thirteen has passed. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Fourteen for consideration to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of funding the stormwater program required under the NPDES MS4 permit, including the payments of costs incidental or related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or to take any other action relative thereto. And the Finance Committee recommended the town appropriate $325,000 for funding the stormwater program required under the SPDES MS permit, MS4 permit, I'm sorry, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto. The source of funding is the July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash. Do I have a second on Article Fourteen? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate $325,000 for funding the stormwater program required under the SPDES MS4 permit, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, with the source of funding being July 1, 2024 Certified Free Cash? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Fourteen has passed. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Fifteen for consideration to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the PEG Access Enterprise Fund for the purpose of funding the operating budget of the PEG Access Studio Facility in Saugus for the fiscal year 2026. Said funds to be distributed under the authority and direction of the Board of Selectment as they see fit pursuant to the current cable television renewal license agreement and the current agreement between the town and its designee of PEG Access Corporation. The Finance Committee recommended that the town appropriate the sum of $366,300 for the purpose of funding the operating budget of the PEG Access Studio Facility in Saugus for the fiscal year 2026. Source of funding is the PEG Access Enterprise Fund, revenue received out of the current cable television renewal agreement held in the PEG Access Enterprise Fund. Do I have a second on Article Fifteen? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate the sum of $366,300 for the purpose of funding the operating budget of the PEG Access Studio Facility in Saugus for the fiscal year 2026? The source of funding is the PEG Access Enterprise Fund, revenue received under the current cable television renewal agreement held in the PEG Access Enterprise Fund. Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Fifteen has passed. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Sixteen for consideration to see if the Saugus Town Meeting will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $10,000 to the Saugus Historical Commission for the purpose of hiring an historic preservation consultant to prepare nominations for placing the Roby School, the Saug, the Center School, Town Hall Annex, and the Old Town Hall, Procopio American Legion Building, in Saugus Center, with the possible addition of the Revolutionary War Cemetery and the Soldiers and Sailors Monument as a historic district on the National Register of Historic Places. The Historic Commission will work with the town manager to expend these funds to accomplish this purpose. The Finance Committee voted to recommend this, refer this article back to the maker. Do I have a second on Article Sixteen? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article Sixteen? Yes, Mr. Minugian.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to hear from the Historical Commission on this. Is there anyone here this evening that can present this article, as to what their reasoning is? And I'd like them to address the concept that this could actually be not in our best interest to be able to repair these buildings if we need to. So with that being said, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to lay this on the table and give them an opportunity, someone from the Historical Commission, to explain this at our next meeting. So I'd like to move to table it.
Okay, we have an article, I mean, we have a motion before us to table Article Sixteen till the next meeting? Seconded? All in favor? Opposed? All right, Article Sixteen is on the table. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Seventeen for consideration to see if the Saugus Town will vote a sum of money, $250,000 for enrichment programming at the Belmonte Steam Academy from the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting. The Saugus Public Schools Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund is hereby incorporated by reference. Said funds shall be transferred to the special revenue fund specifically for the enrichment program at the Belmonte Steam Academy to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal, in Article Two referenced above and in accordance with Mass General Law Superintendent of Schools. Finance Committee recommended that the town appropriate $100,000 for enrichment programming at the Belmonte Steam Academy for the purpose of supplementing educational program, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting. The source of funding is the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund, and said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal as presented to the town meeting in accordance with Mass General Law. Do I have a second on Article Seventeen? All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Minugian.
Mr. Moderator, through the Chairman of the Finance Committee, or perhaps the town accountants, how much, if this is appropriated, what would the balance be in that fund? Then I have another question.
Who wants to field that one?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, ladies and gentlemen, if I had to take a guess, I'm going to say it's about north of $3 million after this would be taken out, maybe 3.4 million, somewhere around there.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
This fund was created, we outlined eight uses, potential uses, and the eighth one was to develop any program deemed appropriate and proven effective with the goal of bringing about student academic and social recovery from two years of remote learning. The Town of Saugus Town Meeting did a great thing by establishing this fund to have students get caught up from remote learning. And to date, I'm shocked at the lack of programming, if you will, to address those needs. Should we assume that the students are caught up? You know, the research shows the deficits that occurred in student learning as a result of COVID and remote learning. And we would have thought that by now, there'd be tutoring programs, testing at the elementary level to gauge where students were, norm reference testing, parent guardian communication and training, access to technology, a whole host of things, and plus, the flexibility with the eighth purpose, any program. I hope that the lack of programming is not intentional, so that somehow these funds can be transferred to settle pending contracts. These funds were for kids to get caught up, and we have a lack of programming thus far, with only $1 million spent out of four. I would hope the school committee and the superintendent would come up with something to help kids. It's either that, or they're all caught up, and they don't need anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minugian. Any further discussion on Article Seventeen? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation that the town appropriate $100,000 for enrichment programming at the Belmonte Steam Academy for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The source of funding is the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund, and said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purpose stated in the proposal as presented to the town meeting and in accordance with Mass General Laws. All in favor of Article Seventeen, as just read, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Seventeen has passed. As a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Eighteen for consideration to see if Saugus Town will vote a sum of money, $250,000 for enrichment programming at Saugus Middle School from the Supplemental Student Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The Saugus Public Schools Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund is hereby incorporated by reference. Said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund specifically for the enrichment programs at the Saugus Middle School to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal in Article Two referenced above and in accordance with Mass General Laws. Finance Committee recommended to the town, that the town appropriate $250,000 for enrichment programming at the Saugus Middle School for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The source of funding is the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund, and said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal as presented to town meeting and in accordance with Mass General Laws. Do I have a second on Article Eighteen? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate $250,000 for enrichment programming at the Saugus Middle School? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Eighteen has passed. Article Nine, as a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Nineteen for consideration to see if the Saugus Town will vote the sum of money, $100,000 for enrichment programming at Saugus High School from the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The Saugus Public Schools Supplemental Student Reserve Fund is hereby incorporated by reference. Said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund specifically for an enrichment program at the Saugus High School to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal in Article Two, referenced above and in accordance with Mass General Laws. Finance Committee recommended that the town appropriate $100,000 for enrichment programming at the Saugus High School, yeah, for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The source of funding is the Supplemental Student Reserve Fund, and said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal as presented to town meeting and in accordance with Mass General Laws. All in favor of Article Nineteen? I'm sorry, do I have a second on Article Nineteen? Any discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate $100,000 for enrichment programming at Saugus High School? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Nineteen has passed. I may have jumped one here, and I apologize. That was Article Nineteen, which was $100,000 for enrichment programs at Saugus High School, and that passed. I don't believe we voted on Article Eighteen, which was $250,000 for enrichment programming at the Saugus. We did? We covered that? Okay, my bad. All right, so as a courtesy to the Finance Committee, Ms. Meredith moves Article Twenty for consideration to see if the town will vote a sum of money, $75,000 for enrichment programming at the Veterans Early Learning Center from the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The Saugus Public Schools Supplemental Student Support Fund Reserve Fund is hereby incorporated by reference. Said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund specifically for an enrichment program at the Veterans Early Learning Center to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal in Article Two referenced above and in accordance with Mass General Laws. Finance Committee recommended the town appropriate $75,000 for enrichment programming at the Veterans Early Learning Center for the purpose of supplementing educational programming, not supplanting it pursuant to Article Two of the October 24, 2022 Special Town Meeting, whereas voted by town meeting? The source of funding is the Supplemental Student Reserve Fund, and said funds shall be transferred to a special revenue fund to be expended for the purposes stated in the proposal as presented to town meeting and in accordance with Mass General Laws. Do I have a second on Article Twenty? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of the Finance Committee's recommendation to appropriate $75,000 for enrichment programming at the Veterans Early Learning Center, with the source of funding being the Supplemental Student Support Reserve Fund? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Article Twenty has passed. Okay, not having a recommendation, we need a recommendation from the planning board on Article Twenty-One. At this time, I would entertain a motion to take Articles Twenty-Two through Twenty-Six out of order. All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor of taking Articles Twenty-Two to Twenty-Six out of order? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right. As a courtesy to the maker, Ms. Meredith moves Article Twenty-Two for consideration to see if the town will vote to the establishment of a formal governance bylaw to ensure the protection, preservation, and proper use of public playgrounds in the Town of Saugus. Background, Saugus is the home to a limited number of open spaces and playgrounds that serve as vital resources for the community, especially for families and children. These spaces are essential for recreation, mental and physical health, and community cohesion. However, recent divisions and proposals regarding the use and management of playgrounds, such as the potential conversion of Stalker Playground, have highlighted the need for clearer governance and greater public involvement in decisions affecting these public assets. The proposed governance bylaw, one, preservation of playgrounds, public playgrounds cannot be converted for other uses without a two-thirds town meeting vote and public hearing. Two, community input. Proposals to alter playgrounds must include at least one public hearing. Three, transparency. Proposals must be publicly available 30 days before any vote. Four, oversight committees. Seven members, three appointed by the town council, three elected by town meeting, and one from Parks and Recreations. Term limits, two-year terms with a maximum of two consecutive terms. Responsibilities, advise on maintenance, review changes, hold public hearings, ensure deed compliance. Selection process, public nominations, town council interviews, annual election of chairperson. The committee will elect a chairperson annually from its membership. Deed compliance, ensure playgrounds with deed restrictions comply with their terms. Playground are essential community assets, and this bylaw ensures transparency, accountability, and protection for future generations. Why this matters, playgrounds are not just plots of land, they are investments in the future of our town. Ensuring their proper governance and preservation is critical to protecting the interests of families, children, and future generations. Without clear bylaws, playgrounds are vulnerable to changes that may not align with the community's best interest. And I do have an opinion by the town council. Give me a second. I didn't read this earlier, because I'm just going to do it as the motions come up, but the town council did submit a, an opinion on the warrant in accordance with Section Twenty-Eight of the Town Charter of the Town of Saugus. I've reviewed the warrant for the annual town meeting, scheduled to be held on May 5th, consisting of twenty-eight articles. In my opinion, said warrant and the twenty-eight articles contained therein are legal with respect to form, and town meeting is within its authority to act on said articles as written with the following qualifications. Article Twenty-Two is an article to establish a bylaw to ensure the protection, preservation, and proper use of public playgrounds in the town. This article is not proper and should not be voted to adopt, as said article contradicts the powers and duties of the town manager set forth in the town charter. Under the provisions of Article Two, Section 13H of the Town Charter, the town manager has jurisdiction over the rental and use of all town property. With that recommendation, I, at this time, first of all, do I have a second on Article Twenty-Two? All right, Article Twenty-Two moved and seconded. At this time, I would entertain a motion for indefinite postponement, unless there's any, is there any discussion on Article Twenty-Two prior to that? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for indefinite postponement? Made? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor of indefinitely postponing Article Twenty-Two? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, Article Twenty-Two is indefinitely. All right, Article twenty-two is indefinitely postponed. As a courtesy to the Maker, Ms. Meredith moves Article twen, I'm sorry, no, where are we? Mr. Pallante moves Article twenty-three for consideration to see if the town will vote to establish an eleven-member charter review committee to review the existing town charter and recommend updates or amendments if applicable for the betterment of the town of Sawgus. Said committee shall be composed of eleven town meeting members selected by public lottery from a pool of those who express an interest in serving. Said committee shall operate under the following guidelines. Call for volunteers shall be issued to all town meeting members. If more than eleven members express interest, a random public lottery shall be conducted at a posted session of town meeting to select the members. Members shall serve for the full duration of the review process anticipated to be two years. The committee shall organize within three days of appointment and elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk. All meetings shall be open to the public and conducted in accordance with the open meeting law. The committee shall not have a budget, but may consult with town officials, legal counsel, or subject, subjected matters, matter experts as needed. If a member resigns or is otherwise unable to serve, the vacancy shall be filled by public lottery from a new pool of interested town meeting members. If no new volunteers come forward, the seat shall remain vacant unless the committee falls below seven members, in which case a new call for volunteers shall be issued. The committee shall present an initial report at the two thousand and twenty-six Annual Town Meeting. A final report and recommendation shall be presented at the two thousand and seven Annual Town Meeting. The committee shall dissolve upon completion of its final report unless town meeting votes to extend its term or establish a recurring review process. Submitted by Matthew Pallante, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. Do I have a second on Article twenty-three?
No.
All right, Article twenty-three is moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Pallante? I'm sorry, one, before you do that, I should, because I'm doing this on each, I do have a recommendation also on Article twenty-three from the Finance, I mean, from the, I'm sorry, the town council. Article twenty-three is an article to establish an eleven-person charter review committee to review the existing town charter and recommend updates and amendments. This article, if passed, does not give the committee any legally binding authority for any charter change or amendment, as there is a statutory legal process for the review and revision of town charter under Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-three B. This statute, this statutory process requires a petition from a percentage of registered voters and a submission of the question to the voters of revising the charter and an election of a charter commission. That's, again, the appointment of town council. I'm sorry, Mr. Pallante, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Mr. Manager, select board members that are here, present, residents at home. Just, I'd like to start by just noting a few other cities and towns that have recently done charter reviews. Lynn just did their first charter review in over forty years. Malden just did a landmark charter reform. Arlington, Watertown, Framingham, Lexington, and Amherst have all done it since two thousand and eighteen. These cities and towns prove that a charter review, you know, it's normal, it's necessary, and beneficial. Our charter adopted in nineteen forty-seven with only minor updates since. There's many sections that predate modern open meeting law, digital record requirements, and current best practices. Lacks language around digital transparency, regular charter review mechanisms, modern separation of powers and clarity on appointment authority. Residents have no real structured way to suggest reform. What this committee does is it creates a temporary eleven-member committee. It's, you know, I put in there to be by lottery, so it makes it pretty fair. Nobody is exempt from being on this committee. We're going to study, the committee would study, the town charter and recommend changes, open to the public, complies with open meeting law, automatically dissolves after issuing recommendations. It's seventy-five years old, it's long overdue. The article creates no legal changes, it only forms a study group. This is about transparency, not control. It's not about power, it's about progress. The articles don't take, this article doesn't take any authority away from anyone, simply gives Sawgus a chance to clean, clean up and outdated rules, revisit our foundation, and make sure we're running this town in a way that reflects the world we live in today. No cost, no overreach, just good government. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Durant.
Hello, Stacy Herman Durant from Precinct One. While I'm not opposed to revisiting the charter, I think it's always good to review things periodically. I will say that the eleven-member committee, I was wondering if we would consider perhaps having one representative from each precinct to make sure that we were elected by our precinct, to make sure that at least one person from every precinct would be on the committee, and if no, no persons come forward, then we could proceed with the lottery. But that would give the members of our community a chance to come to us and maybe make any suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durant. Any further discussion on Article twenty-three? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the question.
Roll call.
We have a motion, a motion for a roll call vote, Madam Chairman, I mean, Madam Secretary? All right. All in favor of the town establishing an eleven-member charter review committee to review the existing Sawgus Town Charter and recommend updates or amendments if applicable for the betterment of the town of Sawgus? Said committee shall be composed of eleven town meeting members selected by public lottery from a pool of those who express interest in serving. Said committee shall operate under the following guidelines. Call for volunteers shall be issued to all town meeting members. If more than eleven members express interest, a random public lottery shall be conducted at a posted session of town meeting to select the members. Members shall serve for the full duration of the review process anticipated to be two years. The committee shall organize within three days of appointment and elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk. All meetings shall be open to the public and conducted in accordance with the open meeting law. The committee shall have a budget, but may consult with town officials, legal counsel, and our subject matter experts as needed. If a member resigns or is otherwise unable to serve, the vacancy shall be filled by public lottery from a new pool of intended, interested town meeting members. If no new volunteers come forward, the seat shall remain vacant unless the committee falls below seven members, in which case a new call for volunteers shall be issued. The committee shall present an initial report at the two thousand and twenty-six Annual Town Meeting, and a final report and recommendation shall be presented at the two thousand and twenty-seven Annual Town Meeting. The committee shall dissolve upon completion of its final report unless town meeting votes to extend its term or establish a recurring review process. All in favor of the Article twenty-three, as I just read, when a clerk calls your name, signify by saying aye or yes. All opposed, signify by saying nay or no.
Bartolo.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Barubi.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Camuso.
Yes.
Chapores.
Yes.
Connors.
No.
Costello.
No.
Codham.
No.
Cross.
No.
Curry.
Yes.
Davis.
No.
Delios.
No.
Doherty, Dunn.
No.
Federico.
Yes.
Ferrari.
No.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Robowski is not here. Herman Durand.
Yes.
Hickman.
No.
Kelly.
No.
Long.
No.
LaPresti is not here. Minugian.
No.
McCarthy.
No.
McCullough is not here. Meredith.
No.
Mareschi.
No.
O'Brien.
No.
Pelashi.
No.
Palumba.
No.
Panetta.
No.
Panico.
No.
Peolini.
No.
Pallente.
Yes.
Rakinic is not here. Ring.
No.
Rosetti.
Yes.
Sacco is not here. Shenna.
No.
Scuzzarella.
No.
Selkowski is not here. Spencer.
No.
Straznik is not here. Taligan.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Wallace.
Yes.
Whitcomb.
No.
Worthling.
No.
It is thirteen yays, twenty-nine nays, and seven absent.
All right, with that, Article twenty-three has failed to pass. As a courtesy, I'm sorry, Mr. Pallante moves Article twenty-four for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a new section establishing a recurring charter review committee every five years, beginning in two thousand and thirty as follows. Section X, periodic charter review committee. Purpose: Beginning in the year two thousand and thirty and every five years thereafter, the town of Sawgus shall establish a charter review committee to review the Sawgus Town Charter and recommend any updates or amendments for consideration. Two, composition in term: The charter review committee shall consist of eleven town meeting members selected by public lottery from those who express interest. Three, selection and vacancies: A call for volunteers shall be issued to all town meeting members. If more than eleven members express interest, a random public lottery shall be conducted at a posted session of town meeting. If a member resigns or is unable to serve, the vacancy shall be filled by public lottery from a new pool of interested town meeting members. If no new volunteers come forward, the seat shall remain vacant unless the committee falls below seven members, in which case a new call for volunteers shall be issued. The committee shall present an initial report at the two thousand and twenty-six Annual Town Meeting, and a final report and recommendation shall be presented at the two thousand and twenty-seven Annual Town Meeting. The committee shall dissolve upon completion of its final report unless town meeting votes to extend its term or establish a recurring review process. All in favor of the Article twenty-three, as I just read, when a clerk calls your name, signify by saying aye or yes. All opposed, signify by saying nay or no.
Bartolo.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
Barubi.
No.
Brown.
No.
Camuso.
Yes.
Chapores.
Yes.
Connors.
No.
Costello.
No.
Codham.
No.
Cross.
No.
Curry.
No.
Davis.
No.
Delios.
No.
Doherty, Dunn.
No.
Federico.
Yes.
Ferrari.
No.
Goodwin.
No.
Robowski is not here. Herman Durand.
No.
Hickman.
No.
Kelly.
No.
Long.
No.
LaPresti is not here. Minugian.
No.
McCarthy.
No.
McCullough is not here. Meredith.
No.
Mareschi.
No.
O'Brien.
No.
Pelashi.
No.
Palumba.
No.
Panetta.
No.
Panico.
No.
Peolini.
No.
Pallente.
Yes.
Rakinic is not here. Ring.
No.
Rosetti.
Yes.
Sacco is not here. Shenna.
No.
Scuzzarella.
No.
Selkowski is not here. Spencer.
No.
Straznik is not here. Taligan.
No.
Thompson.
No.
Wallace.
Yes.
Whitcomb.
No.
Worthling.
No.
It is thirteen yays, twenty-nine nays, and seven absent.
All right, with that, Article twenty-three has failed to pass. As a courtesy, I'm sorry, Mr. Pallante moves Article twenty-four for consideration to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws by adding a new section establishing a recurring charter review committee every five years, beginning in two thousand and thirty as follows. Section X, periodic charter review committee. Purpose: Beginning in the year two thousand and thirty and every five years thereafter, the town of Sawgus shall establish a charter review committee to review the Sawgus Town Charter and recommend any updates or amendments for consideration. Two, composition in term: The charter review committee shall consist of eleven town meeting members selected by public lottery from those who express interest. Three, selection and vacancies: A call for volunteers shall be issued to all town meeting members. If more than eleven members express interest, a random public lottery shall be conducted at a posted session of town meeting. If a member resigns or is unable to serve, the vacancy shall be filled by public lottery from a new pool of interested town meeting members. If no new volunteers come forward, the seat shall remain vacant unless the committee falls below seven members, in which case a new call for volunteers shall be issued. The committee shall organize within thirty days of appointment and elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk. All meetings shall be open to the public and conducted in accordance with the open meeting law. Meeting notices shall be posted on the town's website at least forty-eight hours in advance. The committee shall not have a budget. The committee may consult with town officials, legal counsel, or subject matter, subject matter experts as needed. All recommendations made by the committee shall be non-binding. Reporting and final recommendations: The committee shall present an initial report at the second Annual Town Meeting following its formation. A final report and recommendation shall be presented at the third Annual Town Meeting following its formation. The committee shall dissolve upon the completion of its final report unless town meeting votes to extend its term. Recurrence: A new charter review committee shall be formed every five years, with the next committee established in two thousand and thirty, two thousand and thirty-five, two thousand and forty, two thousand and forty-five, and so on. Each committee shall follow the same selection process and structure. Do I have a second on Article twenty-four? Article twenty-four moved and seconded. Discussion? Mr. Pallante?
Figured I'd come up and try it again. This is to create a permanent policy to establish a charter review every five years. Why we're against a charter review, I don't understand. It only makes sense to me. But this would include it into our bylaws, that we would do a periodic review every five years. We should have scheduled checkups with our documents and the way that we run government in this town. This removes politics from the process by making it routine, and it helps avoid legal and procedural crisis in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. I do have a, again, an opinion from the town council where he states Article twenty-four is an article seeking to amend the town bylaws by adding a bylaw to establish a recurring charter review committee every five years. This bylaw, if passed, would not have any binding effect on future town meeting actions based on any reports or recommendations of this committee. As outlined in his previous decision on, or opinion on Article twenty-three, there is a statutory legal process for the review and revision of a town charter. Do I have any other discussion on Article twenty-four? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. Yes?
I'm wondering, if we have to read the whole article and then you make a little bit
Warren.
Yes. What's that? No. No, they're the same as presented on the warrant. Mr. Pallante moves Article 25 for consideration. To see if the town will vote to affirm the town's prior acceptance of Mass General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5K, as voted in 2014, and further vote to implement and modernize a senior citizen property tax work-off program consistent with the statutes as most recently amended, effective January 2nd, 2024. And to authorize the board and our town manager to promulgate policies and procedures for said program, including but not limited to allowing eligible residents age sixty-year-old at a volunteer service to the town in exchange for a work-based earned abatement of up to $2,000 per fiscal year based on a rate not exceeding the current Commonwealth minimum wage, allowing eligible residents who are physically unable to volunteer to designate a representative to provide such services on their behalf, ensuring that earned abatements are processed through the town's payroll system and are subject to appropriate federal withholdings and reporting, including issuance of a Form W-2, budgeting for the program, including any employee payroll tax obligations through the town's annual overlay account in accordance with guidance from the Department of Revenue without requiring new revenue or increases to the tax rate, maintaining accurate records of hours worked, abatements earned, and reporting such as the Board of Assessors, such to the Board of Assessors for proper application to the tax bill, and providing for query background checks for program participants, and establishing oversight and supervision policies consistent with temporary municipal employees and liability protections under Mass General Law's Chapter 258. Establishing an annual application and placement process, including publication of guidelines, departmental needs, and income eligibility criteria, if any, to ensure fairness and broad community benefit, directing the Board of Assessors to administer the abatements in accordance with certified records submitted by the program coordinator, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a second on Article 26? All right, Article 26 is moved and seconded. I do have an opinion from the town council, which I will read, no, I'm sorry, I don't have an opinion from the town council. On Article 26. Oh, I'm sorry, on Article 25, I do have an opinion from the town council. Article 25 is an article to vote to implement and modernize a previously accepted senior citizen property tax work-off program statute and to authorize the selectmen or the town manager to promulgate policies and procedures for said program. The article is not proper and should not be voted to adopt as this statute, Mass General Law's Chapter 58, Section 5K, provides that the Board of Selectmen or the town manager may establish this program. The town meeting has no authority to implement this program as the decision to implement such a program is in the discretion of the Board of Selectmen and the town manager as set forth in the statute. I also have a, an amendment to Article 26, which addresses that, that has been submitted by the maker. And the new Article 26, I'm sorry, Article 25, forgive me, would read as follows: "To see if the town will vote to reaffirm its prior acceptance of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 59, Section 5K, originally accepted by town meeting in 2014, and to acknowledge and reflect amendments made to said statute by the legislature in 2024, for the purpose of encouraging the town manager to fully activate and administer the senior property tax work-off program as permitted by law, or take any other action relative thereto." Do I have a second to the amendment on Article 25? All right, moved and seconded, any discussion to the amendment? Yes, Mr. Costello.
Martin Costello, Precinct 10. In looking over this article, I only have a few questions, and I'm going to direct them to Town Council, Mr. Vaspoli. First of all, what sort of work would the senior citizens be doing? How many of these senior citizens would be eligible to do it? And what kind of liability would the town be opening themselves up for in such a case? And basically, those are my three questions for Mr. Vaspoli, yes?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. This is an article to, based on the amendment, to reaffirm an acceptance of a statute that this town meeting accepted, I think back in 2014. I see the maker has made an amendment to that motion, to reaffirm that vote, and to encourage, I think, the administration to adopt certain policies with respect to this senior workforce. What I'd like to explain to the town meeting, especially the two new town meeting members, is, town meeting basically has three functions. One is to appropriate money, two is to accept statutes, and three is to adopt and amend zoning bylaws and town bylaws. Town meeting really has no authority to authorize, or to encourage, or to order the administration to take certain action. It's just like in appropriating funds, the town manager can't spend any money without an appropriation from this body. But, but the town manager doesn't have to spend the money, but this, obviously, the town meeting must appropriate money in order for the town side to operate. So, the issue I had with this article was basically, and the statute is pretty clear, I did make a typo, and I think the maker did point that out. It is a proper statute, it is Chapter 59, not 58, where we're talking about the same statute. But basically, that's my concern. This town meeting can encourage the administration to adopt this and institute this, but they can't encourage, they can't dictate, it is up to the manager and the administration to decide whether or not they want to adopt this program. Town meeting has accepted the statute to allow it to happen, but town meeting cannot dictate, or order, or encourage the administration to adopt any policies. It's just like town meeting couldn't adopt a bylaw that basically says they would approve all hires, because under the town charter, the town manager hires and fires all the employees, so you can't adopt a bylaw that would restrict his authority that sets forth on the charter. And the basic theory that town meeting appropriates the money, town manager spends it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaspoli. Mr. Pallante.
Article 25 does not seek to enact or override executive authority. It reaffirms our prior acceptance of Section 5K, acknowledges 2024 legislative updates, and respectfully urges the town manager and select board to fully implement the program. This is a common and accepted use of warrant articles. Town meeting frequently passes resolutions and reauthorizations to reflect new legal updates and community priorities. Bear with me, please. So, first of all, I mean, what we're talking about is helping seniors stay in their homes, departments get extra help, and to answer the question, the, the law states that the town isn't legally liable, like if someone slipped and fell, they're covered, that they wouldn't get, the town would not get sued, it's in the Mass General Laws. Seniors feel valued, right? You're giving them something to do. It's fully legal and already accepted, but it hasn't been implemented in a decade. It's funded through an overlay account, which, I have some numbers here. From 20, 27, I'm sorry, 2007 to 2010, our overlay budget was 1.2 to 1.5 million. Following years up until 2014, it was only a few hundred thousand. 2015 to 2018, 665K, and since 2022, 2023, 2024, 2025, it's 500,000. Now, I also want to note that in 2024, we had a surplus, an overlay surplus of 1.32 million, that we moved to free cash, which went to the general budget. So, there's 1.3 million dollars in surplus in our overlay budget that could have been used for this program, but it got, turned into free cash and went to our general fund. To answer another question that you asked, how many seniors? The town manager and the select board, they decide. You can do a pilot program with fifteen seniors, fifteen to thirty seniors, and if we're talking about a thousand dollars per senior, that's 30,000 dollars. I mean, when we're talking about what we had in the surplus that we turned to the free cash, 30,000 is a very small amount of money that would make a big difference for seniors in this town. Another number I just want to point out, 4.615 million in free cash through the special that we moved to other sources, and then just tonight, it was another 1.1 million and another 150,000 of free cash used for other purposes. So, what that tells me, and should tell everybody here, is that there's money that's not getting used that could be used in a small program like this. Again, we're talking about helping seniors out. You know, I've heard this be, you know, a feel-good article to get votes, or problems that don't exist. I've talked to seniors, and this problem exists. Seniors are struggling out there. And if you don't know that, maybe talk to some of the residents in your precinct. Also, another number, 126,830 dollars, according to our cherry sheet, which was reimbursed from the state in 20, for this 2025 cherry sheet, reimbursed to the town for tax exemptions that we give in this town to veterans and seniors. So, we get 126,000 back from the state. So, my point is, and I'm sure that you guys all picked it up, is there's money for this. Why it hasn't been implemented? I was told the unions didn't want elderly into the buildings, they didn't want their jobs stolen. That was the excuse that I was given when I said, hey, how come this didn't get implemented? So, talking to seniors, hearing that as a, as an answer to why it didn't get implemented, it made sense. I requested this quietly through an email. I didn't want to have to come up here and have it voted on, it shouldn't, we shouldn't have to reaffirm this, this should be a pretty simple to-do, but here we are. So... I mean, 150,000 for Godrails, we don't have 30,000 for seniors? I guess I'm just going to leave it with that. I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Vaspoli.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. Just to clarify, the statute, Chapter 59, Section 5K, provides that any city or town which accepts this, the provisions of this section, which they have, may establish, the town may establish a program to allow persons over the age of 60 to volunteer to provide services to the city or town. The decision, the "may," is a decision of the administration. The administration obviously has the authority to look into the insurance liability, what the financial aspect of it is, there's union involved, so, again, it's discretionary. The town meeting has accepted this section, but the administration may establish this program, so it is discretionary. So, this vote to reaffirm really doesn't do any harm, but to direct or to suggest that, or to sort of give the impression that the administration is not answering or doing what town meeting has directed, I think is a little bit misplaced. So, again, you've accepted this statute, it's up to the administration as to whether or not they, they want to implement such a program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaspoli. Any further discussion on Article 25? Oh, yes. Andrew.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew Whitcomb, 212 Essex Street, Apartment 102. The town council pretty much just answered every question I had, but with respect to the maker of the article, the gentleman from Breisington, all of this sounds like a great program, it sounds like a great idea, but I guess the part I was confused on that the town council just clarified is, there is no current program, and whether this article passes or fails tonight, nothing changes. It's akin to a strongly worded letter. The town meeting has no authority in this area, other than to reaffirm a vote from ten years ago that didn't do any good or harm then, unless I'm getting this wrong. I mean, like I said, it sounds like a great idea, regardless of how many senior citizens it helps or how much it costs, but this is a conversation to have with the Board of Selectmen and the town manager's office, and certainly, I think it's irrelevant here, but it does sound good. Did I get that correct, Mr. Town Council? I did, thank you. Good night, everyone.
Any further discussion? Mr. Pallante.
I just wanted to just make one more point. I mean, I don't, the town council mentioned the word "may." I'd like to just change "may" to "could." And I'm not saying that, you know, there's anything, you know, whatever the reason is, it doesn't matter. The reason this got brought up for me was talking to seniors, talking to people in my precinct, talking to people in town. This is a real issue for people in here. This is a real issue everywhere, you know, especially with the, the money that we're going to need for the Volk, you know, and the new fire station, like taxes may get raised. We should be able to implement something now and, you know, try to help the seniors out. And again, yes, it's, it's a reaffirm. What we're saying when we vote yes is, hey, the same thing they said in 2014 when they voted yes, hey, this is a great idea for our seniors, let's do it, right? And it basically encourages the town manager and the select board to say, hey, enough people, the governing body of Saugus voted to implement this, then they voted to reaffirm it, we should do this. This is a, this is a good, a good thing to, to help the seniors in this town. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Any further discussion on Article 15? Yes, Mr. Costello.
Martin Costello, Precinct 10. For information, I'm 75 years old, okay? The discussion tonight has been that the administration, the town manager and the administration have the decision-making power to decide whether or not this gets done. But, I'm not going to question my colleague who submitted this with the fact that there are seniors in this town who will probably, would benefit from something like this. But, I'm just going to ask the town manager, if a, if a senior citizen in this town is in such a situation that their property tax bill is becoming onerous, they have a recourse to the town, I'm sure, with regard to the abatement process, to get some kind of relief on that format. I just want to touch on that right now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Further discussion on Article 25? Okay, seeing none, we're going to call the question. Oh, Mr. Pallante, go ahead.
This isn't just about the money, right? Money helps, but also, we're giving seniors who might be sitting home doing nothing, purpose, something to do. How much experience do some of these seniors in this town have, right? How many were educators? How many, you know, were, were government officials, or lawyers, or doctors, or whatever? They could not only benefit from it, but the town could benefit from it as well. So, you know, make no mistake, this is more than just, you know, helping them out with their tax and water bills, this is about, you know, having them feel appreciated, having them feel valued, having them feel like they, they're a part of the community, this is more than money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallante. Yes, Mr. Minougan.
Well, I read a couple of things come to mind. I see nothing in here about a means test. I, I'm wondering if the seniors that really need this would get it. I mean, what about, how do you determine who will benefit from it? There's, there are people that are well off, there's, there's also families that are under 60 years old that are struggling. You know, if we want to lower the tax burden, let's do it for everybody, and you'd have to start when Article 2 comes, because in December, November, December, the Board of Selectmen is going to set a tax rate based on what you say should be spent. And perhaps, if you really want to lower the taxes and be fair to everybody, spend less money. Look at that Article 2, determine where you want to make the cuts, you've done some great analysis of what kind of money is available in free cash, cut it. Cut the budget, give everyone a tax break. You won't be able to get two and a half on top of that in subsequent years, but if that's really what you want to do, be fair to everybody. Because there's nothing in here that's, you could have a millionaire get into this program, they could have a great accounting degree or experience. You're going to say no to them because you can afford to pay your taxes? How would that work? I'm sensitive to this concept of appealing to seniors. Saugus is an older community. It's good politics. It's good politics, it really is. But if you really want to be fair to everybody, cut it across the board. And let me say this about the money that's being spent last week and this week. I said to the Town Manager, you really won last week, but you really lost, because now you got to do all this stuff. I mean, we, this town, you don't remember what we went through in the early 2000s, when the Department of Revenue was banging on the door and people wanted receivership. And we had negative free cash and accounting gimmicks. This town went through some very difficult times. And, you know, there are other communities all around us going for overrides, because they spent that ARPA money on salaries and they didn't put it into reserve funds. We have a capital program that's being funded with free cash. They were talking about that at the Mass Municipal Association back in the 90s, that that's what you should do. We're light years ahead of where we were. And if you want this program to be implemented, I would suggest that you go to the Board of Selectmen, they're the policymakers of the town, they've set goals for the Town Manager, whether it be playgrounds or West Side Fire Station or the Communications. Have the Selectmen adopt it as a goal. Make it a goal for the next round of Town Manager evaluation, that we'd like to see this implemented. That's what you can do. Or you can be fair to everyone and come up with a way to cut the budget for everyone and so that everyone gets a tax break. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manugian. Mr. Pallanti.
We give everybody a tax break when we tax our commercial businesses more than residents. So there's a tax break. And we're talking about the most susceptible, vulnerable part of our community, the seniors. Most of them are on fixed income, most of them can't, you know, barely afford tax bills and dinner. You know, again, people, people are, people are ashamed to admit that, right? But go and talk to people. And money well spent. We're in a much better, I, I remember reading about twenty years ago, but I'm constantly reminded in this hall right here how fiscally strong we are right now. We're in a good place, thanks to our Town Manager. Does a great job with the finances. Again, what I'm talking about that would make a huge difference for people is peanuts compared to anything else we're going to pass in here, anything else. So, again, this isn't, and to my colleague, I did reach out to the Select Board. I got no response. I reached out to Town Manager, I got no response. So here I am, asking this body here to support reaffirming this article, to encourage the Town Manager and the Select Board to get this implemented. They set the rules, they set the number, they say how many people qualify, how much they qualify. It could be a lottery system. You know, I spoke to several cities and towns that do this. Lottery system, some towns and cities use, they allot twenty-five for water, twenty-five for tax abatement, there's all kinds of ways you can implement this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pallanti. All right, any further discussion on Article 25? What's that? Move the question? All right, we have a motion to move the question. Yes, and a roll call vote, Madam Secretary. All in favor of moving the question? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? All right, we're going to move the question. All in favor of Article 25 as presented? To see if the town will vote to reaffirm its prior acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59. Actually, let me correct that, we're voting first on the amendment, all right? So, all in favor of, to see if the town will reaffirm its prior acceptance of Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K, originally accepted by Town Meeting in 2014, and to acknowledge and reflect amendments made to said statute by the legislature in 2024 for the purpose of encouraging the Town Manager to fulfill activity, I'm sorry, to fully activate and administer the senior property tax work-off program as permitted by law, or take any other action relative thereto. If it pleases the maker, what I'd like to do is just call for a voice vote on the amendment, and immediately following the vote on the amendment, we're going to vote on the article as amended, which we can do with a roll call vote. All right, so all in favor of amending the article as I just read it? Please signify by saying aye. All opposed? All right, we're going for a roll call vote, this is on the amendment, Madam Secretary. All in favor of the amendment? Signify by saying aye or yes. When your name is called, all opposed, say no or nay. After which, we will have another roll call vote on the article as amended, if it's amended, or on the original article if it's not. Go ahead.
Bartolo. Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Japoris. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty, Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski is not here, Herman Duran. Hickman. Kelly. Long. La Presti. Presti is not here, Manugian. McCarthy. McCullough. McCullough is not here, Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Holamba. Panetta. Panico. Peolini. Colente. Rakanic is not here, Ring. Rosetti. Sacco is not here. Shenna. Scuzzarella. Shilkowski is not here, Spencer. Straznik is not here, Taligan. Thompson. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthling. On the amendment, there are thirty-three nays, eight yays, and eight absents.
All right, the amendment has failed, which brings us back to the original article. With the Town Council's opinion that we have that the original article in its original form isn't something we can vote on because of the wording, because we don't have the authority to implement the program, at this time, I would entertain a motion for indefinite postponement on Article 25. All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? It's not as many times as it takes, but to answer the gentleman's question, the prior discussion and vote was on the amendment. We're now back to the original article, which, Mr. Pallanti, you have the floor.
And if I'm not mistaken, we're voting on the, we're voting on Town Council's opinion, is that correct?
We're vote, we're voting on the motion to indefinitely postpone Article 25.
Who made that motion? I didn't hear that motion made.
That was just made and seconded.
But why are we indefinitely postponed? Based on Town Council's opinion?
Based on the opinion of Town Council.
Okay, based on the opinion of Town Council, perfect, that's what I'm trying to get at. I don't know how we can, we can indefinitely postpone an article based on Town Council's opinion when he stated the wrong statute in his opinion. The, that's the foundation of his opinion. You can't, you can't deem something improper based on the wrong statute. You can make it, you can say it's a typo all you want, but it's a typo in a legal document with a legal opinion that we're voting to indefinitely postpone. So I just, I really hope residents pay attention, I hope everybody's really paying attention here, because we're going to vote to indefinitely postpone something based on a legal opinion that states the wrong statute. Just to be clear, I want everybody in here to be clear on that. So when you vote to indefinitely postpone this, you're saying that despite it being the wrong statute, you don't care about that part, you just don't want to vote for it. So just to be clear, that is the wrong statute, he states 58, it's 59. And that's a big difference. If you look up what Mass General Law 58 is, got nothing to do with what we're talking about here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pallanti. Ms. Panetta.
Yeah, I just want to say something real quick, if you don't mind. Hi, my name is Deborah Panetta, Mr. Town Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. The maker of this article stated that he reached out to the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen and got no response, and no one talked to him about this article or anything to do with this article. At the SARGIS 411, I did speak with him, other selectmen did speak with him, reached out to him, whether it be directly or via Facebook. I just wanted Town Meeting to know that the Selectmen do not ignore Town Meeting members. We never ignore Town Meeting members. Town Meeting members are very important to this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Panetta. Mr. Pallanti? All right, Mr. Pallanti? Excuse me, are you standing to be recognized? Because you're kind of walking up like you've got the floor.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just need to make this clear, I mean, I wouldn't come up here unless it was important. The 411 event was a month before I sent the email to the Select Board and the Town Manager. So we had a discussion, I did about three weeks' worth of research, then I emailed the Select Board and got no response.
All right. Is there any further discussion, and if we could, limit it to the motion to indefinitely postpone? Mr. Costello.
Sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
Martin Costello, Precinct 10. Excuse me. There's been a great deal of semantics here between the Town Council and the member of the Town Meeting. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what direction we're going in here, but I would like Mr. Vasapoli to come up, and if he could possibly explain to us in very simple terms as to the verity of the citing of Mass General Law that he's using in his argument here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. The statute we're talking about is Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5K. I don't think there's any question to the statute we're talking about. Programs for persons over age sixty to provide volunteer services for reduction in real estate property obligations. That is the statute, and this is the article that I rendered my opinion on. My typo in my opinion, which I brought to the attention of the Town Meeting, was in citing that statute, I cited Chapter 58 instead of 59, Section 5K. But there's no question as to what statute we were talking about, it was a typo on my mistake, but there's no question, and I don't think the maker of the article could argue that I'm talking about a different statute. It's the same statute, there was a typo in my opinion, I do make typos occasionally, and this is one of them. But there's no question as to what the statute is, and I rest on my opinion and let the Town Meeting, you know, vote as they feel appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vasapoli. Any further discussion? All right, hearing? Motion to withdraw the article? What's that? Yeah, we, actually, we have a motion on the floor to IP the article at this time, so we'll be voting on that. Yes. Mr. Manager, please.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to, I don't want to get in the middle of all this, you know, Town Meeting business, but I do want to say that I've, you know, in the last couple of months, the Selectmen and I have spoken individually. And, you know, there is a, you know, a movement to try to see how to implement it. And I think just for people to remember this, we had a Town Meeting member that was running for state rep, and he submitted this article to be accepted, got a lot of press on it, and then ran for state rep, didn't win, and then didn't run for Town Meeting any longer. And when we tried to look at implementing it back then, it's pretty, it became complicated. So I think we're trying to figure out to revisit that and see how we can help benefit. I know the Selectmen, this is a, you know, big deal for them, I think it's a big deal for everybody. But I think, you know, one of the other speakers talked about the fairness, you know, where do you do it? There's plenty of people that have families with kids that are struggling just as much as seniors. So I think that, trying to figure that out. I'm not sure that working in the community, if you're a doctor or a lawyer or an accountant and, you know, getting a tax break, you know, it makes a lot of sense. But I do think that there are issues with unions, and there are issues with performance, and there are issues if somebody does get hurt in negligence. I think it sounds good, and I think that it has been implemented in other communities twenty years ago, but I do think it's different nowadays. But I'm myself committed to trying to, you know, look at ways of working with the Selectmen to implement something that may be beneficial, that we can help people that are maybe in that situation. So I just, if that helps anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any further discussion on the motion to IP? Hearing none, and they have asked for a roll call vote, so all in favor of inde- No, we have a motion to IP on the floor at this time, so that's the motion that we're voting on. It's too late to withdraw the motion at this point. So, Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, yes vote here is in favor of indefinite postponement, a no vote is opposed.
So a yes is to postpone it, and a no is not?
A yes vote is for indefinite postponement, that's what we're voting on. Yes.
We're voting, we're roll call vote on Article 25. And the motion is to IP.
Yes.
Are we good?
Yep.
Bartolo. Bell. Barubi. Brown. Camuso. Japoris. Connors. Costello. Codham. Cross. Not here. Curry. Davis. Delios. Doherty, Dunn. Federico. Ferrari. Goodwin. Grabowski is not here, Herman Duran. Hickman. Kelly. Long. La Presti is not here, Manugian. McCarthy. McCullough is not here, Meredith. Mareschi. O'Brien. Haleshi. Holamba. Panetta. Panico. Peolini. Colente. Rakanic is not here. Ring. Rosetti. Sacco is not here, Scuzzarella. I'm sorry, Shenna. Scuzzarella. Shilkowski is not here, Spencer. Straznik is not here, Taligan. Thompson. Wallace. Whitcomb. Worthling. Yays are thirty-three, nays are eight, absent is eight.
So by a vote of thirty-three to eight, Article 25 has been indefinitely postponed. All right, as a, I'm sorry, Mr. Pallanti moves Articles 26 for consideration, to see if the town will vote to establish an eleven-member Bylaw Review Committee to review the town's general bylaws and recommend necessary updates, amendments, or consolidation for the purpose of modernization, clarity, consistency, and legal compliance. Said- the purpose of modernization, clarity, consistency, and legal compliance. Said committee shall be composed of 11 town meeting members selected by public lottery from a pool of those who express interest in serving. Said committee shall operate under the following guidelines. A call for volunteers shall be issued to all town meeting members. If more than 11 members express interest, a random public lottery shall be conducted at a posted session of town meeting to select the members. Members shall serve for a full duration of the review process, anticipated to be two years. The committee shall organize within 30 days of appointment and elect a chair, vice chair, and clerk. All meetings shall be open to the public and conducted in accordance with the open meeting law. The committee shall not have a budget, but may consult with town official, legal, legal counsel, or subject matter experts as needed. If a member resigns or is otherwise unable to serve, the vacancy shall be filled by public lottery from a new pool of interested town meeting members. If no new volunteers come forward, the seats shall remain vacant until, uh, unless, I'm sorry, the committee falls below seven members, in which case a new call for volunteers shall be issued. The committee shall present an initial report at the 2026 Annual Town Meeting. A final report and recommendation shall be presented at the 2027 Annual Town Meeting. The committee shall dissolve upon completion of its final report, unless town meeting votes to extend its term to, or establish a recurring review process. Do I have a second on Article 26? Article 26 moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll call the question. All... One second, Mr. Pallanti. Uh, once it's brought onto the floor, it does have to be acted on. At this time, what I would recommend is if someone wanted to make a motion to refer, refer the article back to the maker, we could certainly do that. All right, we have a motion to refer the article back to the maker. Do I have a second? We can try a voice vote here, all in favor? Opposed? The article is referred back to the maker. Article 26. All right, as a courtesy, uh, to the maker, oh, wait a minute, let me see. Where's, uh, no, change that, actually. Mr. Pallanti moves Article 27 for consideration. All right, we have a motion to withdraw Article 27. To, again, um, I, I would entertain a motion to refer Article 27 back to the maker at this time? So, so moved. Do we have a second? All in favor of referring Article 27 back to the maker? All opposed? All right. With that, uh, we appear to have concluded everything we have available with us this evening. What we have left on this year's warrant, so you're aware, are Articles 26, 711, 21, 16, which we laid on the table, which we'll take up at hopefully the next session, and the, uh, special on the, um, Route 1 overlay for the MBTA, which I'm told we're probably not going to be able to meet on until the first week in June. But hopefully we can get through the rest of these articles, um, next week. With that, I would entertain a motion to recess until next week. Motion to recess, second. All in favor? Guys, have a great week. We'll see you back here next Monday.